Welcome to the Merrimack School District SAU 26 School Board Meeting, February 6, 2023. Will everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Board Member Jenna Hardy is excused tonight. I want to open to public participation. If you would like to come speak at the mic, please state your name and your address. If you're a student, you do not have to state your address, just that you are a student, so I'll open the floor.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Marissa Halvatsis. I live at 24 Severance Bridge Road. I came here tonight just to talk a little bit about balanced literacy and Merrimack School Districts right now using that, and I wanted to talk about the importance of using a structured literacy program. While we know that the balanced literacy does incorporate some phonics, we also know that the balanced literacy teaches children to rely on tricks like guessing at words based on the picture or using the first letter of the word. According to a cognitive scientist, the reading expert Pamela Snow, parents may be surprised to learn that they're buying a lottery ticket when it comes to the kind of reading instruction their child will get at school. We know that some children will pick up some, you know, reading quickly and pick up some strategies. However, only about 60% of kids will be able to be successful. We know that 95% of students can learn to read with sufficient direct instruction. Also, I know that studies have shown that explicit systematic instruction in letters represents sounds, especially with phonics. Teaching students to rely on cues like pictures takes their focus away from the letters. When we restrict our students to look at those books deemed at their level, we're actually widening the gaps. And I just have a little quote to end. If a child memorizes 10 words, the child can only read 10 words. But if the child learns the sound of 10 letters, that child will be able to read 353 sound words, 4,324 sound words, and 21,655 sound words. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Erin Aleconis, and I am a resident at 6 Mulicken Road in Merrimack, New Hampshire. So first, I want to say thank you for taking a few minutes to listen to my comments tonight. And then I also want to speak to the budget proposal and the three additional reading specialists that we have proposed for next year. I believe that these are truly needed positions, and I think it's putting Merrimack School Districts in the right direction, so thank you for that. Next, I also want to state that I appreciate the deep dive into the reading curriculum that we're, that's going on right now, because that's been a pretty significant point of contention that I've had for the past few years since my oldest son was in kindergarten. So in regards to the reading curriculum right now, as we move forward, I just wanted to voice my concerns about the current curriculum that we're using, at least in Master Cola Elementary School with Fontis and Pennell. And I hope with this deep dive that we really 100% move away from that reading curriculum, because the aspects of the curriculum, including all aspects of the curriculum, the assessments, the interventions, that would be my hopes with this deep dive. Fontis and Pennell is a balanced literacy or guided reading curriculum that's based in theory. In a recent critique published in Ed Reports that was reported on Education Weekly, Fontis and Pennell doesn't present research or evidence regarding the sequence, and it does not devote enough time to systematic instruction in phonological awareness, phonics, and fluency. And what we found, Reed Lyons, who is, was the head of the National Institute of Child Health and Human Development, he noted that about 60% of kids need explicit and systematic instruction in phonics and phonological awareness to develop appropriate reading skills. It was also noted that by Mark Seidenberg, who's at the University of Wisconsin, he's a cognitive neuroscientist, that Fontis and Pennell, which is a three-queuing approach, makes it more difficult for children to read and to develop foundational skills. And so that's my big concern about the curriculum. And then I wanted to just go into the assessments that Fontis and Pennell uses. So the reason my concerns with Fontis and Pennell, it's basically Benchmark Assessment System. It utilizes informal reading inventory that looks at, it says that it's going to detect the highest level at which a student can decode and comprehend text. In 2014, Burns et al., he published a peer-reviewed study on the accuracy of student performance while reading leveled books rated at their instructional level by reading inventories. It found that only a quarter of students were able to read 93% of their words when they were placed on their instructional level. So it was finding that there was no efficacy with these reading levels. In 2015, Parker et al. did a brief report of the diagnostic accuracy of oral reading fluency and reading inventory levels for reading failure risks among second and third grader grade students. It compared the oral reading fluency, oral reading fluency compared to reading inventory fluent, I'm sorry, reading inventory levels that's found in Fontis and Pennell and running records. Oral reading fluency, so looking at text that is at their grade level that was able to ID at-risk students 80% of the time. It looks at a reading rate, how many words they get correct, and their accuracy at their reading level for one minute, and it's 80% accuracy. What they found with the reading inventories that are used in Fontis and Pennell, that it only IDed at-risk students 54% of the time. So again, we're picking books that are not necessarily leveled correctly for children and identifying those at-risk, at-risk students. So again, I thank you for taking the time to listen to some of the information that I've brought. And I think we are moving in the right direction at Merrimack, but I really hope that we can phone, focus on reading curriculum that targets phonics and phonological awareness as we move forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll move on to recognitions.
We do not have any recognitions this evening.
All right. Superintendent update.
Well, we have some exciting things that are going on in the school district. We'll hopefully report them to you at Reed's Ferry. I want to thank Carolyn Moran and her husband Jerry, who this weekend, despite some of the coldest temperatures we've had in decades, helped clean the Reed's Ferry Nature Trail. This was originally a Boy Scout Eagle Project that had become overgrown, and the Morans spent their weekend, a very difficult weekend weather-wise, cleaning up the trail. So thank you very much to them. Third grade at Master Cola had a wonderful fundraising dance-a-thon. They had fun dancing and started the day with Fired Up Friday. Last Friday on February 3rd, donations were made to the Kelly Family Fundraiser, and everyone at the school had a great, great time. At Merrimack Middle School, the Spelling Bee has concluded, and Spelling Bee winners, first place Jackson LaCretta, second place Tess Howes, third place Cassidy Callahan, fourth place Asher Remy, fifth place Ben Ricks, and sixth place Eva Savage. They all put in a great effort. And Jackson will represent Merrimack Middle School in the semifinal regional Spelling Bee coming up shortly, so congratulations to them. From Rich Loftus at Merrimack Middle School, they are introducing basketball and floor hockey and intramural activities. Lots of actual school activities going on in our schools this year. And I want to thank you and the Budget Committee for supporting co-curricular activities. It's made a huge difference, and we have many, many children involved. 10 students at the middle school have been selected to participate in the New Hampshire Music Educators Association's South Central District Middle School Music Festival this May. In the chorus, we have Lila Moran, Colin Plum, Sadie Taylor, and the band Lauren Brodsky, Amy Hartel, Anna Levine, Jimmy Peavy, Bridget Powers, Ben Ricks, and Miranda Schwartz. Congratulations to them all. Also at the middle school, 20 students also participating in the New Hampshire Music Educators Association's Solo Ensemble Festival this upcoming Saturday, February 11th at UNH. We wish them the best of luck. At the middle school also, the students have participated with Mr. Costa, with James Costa, in what they call School Tube. They put together some videos and have contributed to the school. They are filming about student-driven events, and we congratulate them for them. We're going to have to take a look at that. I'll send you the link that Jim has sent, and it's interesting viewing. And from Sarah Campbell at the high school, the Granite State Challenge team beat John Stock. In the first match of the Granite State Challenge, the final score was Merrimack 550, John Stock 190. And as we close out the first semester, as that has ended, from Tammy LaBrow, she wanted to add that 19 Merrimack High School students received three free college credits from the Nashua Community College by taking an Introduction to Business class, and these credits are transferable to any college. From Director Wellness, Fern Sidon, several programs coming up for parents, Family Connection Circles, and Everyday Mindfulness Strategies. And so Fern is always actively seeking to improve the social, emotional wellness of our students, our staff, and families. And that is it for tonight. Congratulations to all of our students and our staff, and we continue to have them do wonderful things and make us proud every day.
Thank you. That's so exciting to hear, all the amazing things that the students are doing. All right. Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
Thank you. I just wanted to start by thanking both of you, Heather and, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. Erin, thank you for coming tonight and sharing your comments as we do the deep dive into reading, the research and things that you talked about. I just want to thank you for coming. I also just want to take a minute to thank everyone. This is my first budget process that I've gone through here in Merrimack, and I've just been, you know, everyone has just been so great, from the teachers to the other administrators, to all of you, the Budget Committee. It's just been a really interesting process as we go through and set the priorities for next year. I want to give a special thanks to Matt. Matt 100 times a day, people are calling him, and he is so patient and knowledgeable and just such a-
Well, Annie, you're 98 times a day. I mean, it's only the other two.
No, you're not supposed to say that part, Matt, but thank you. I wanted to let you know that the Vision of a Learner, I know we had pushed that off. We were supposed to present to all of you in November, and then we decided that the budget season would take priority. We are scheduled to be here next week with a contingency from the committee to just show that over the last few months, we've been rolling it out at each school. There are some things on our website that Allison Huckins, our district webmaster, has put up there. So that's coming out slowly but surely, but you will finally see the presentation next week. And I just wanted to give you a quick update about some of the important summer professional learning opportunities that I'm working on. I'm really excited to say that the New Hampshire Learning Initiative has reached out to us to be a host district for OGAAP, which is really high-quality math professional development for teachers mostly in grades K to 8. And we're also going to be a host district for a responsive classroom workshop. So in addition to all of the curriculum work, we're also really providing some excellent, high-quality professional learning for our teachers.
All right. Thank you. And Matt, our Assistant Superintendent of Business update.
Thank you very much. Just a brief update. The issue with Master Cola Elementary School, the fourth-grade wing, is taking a little bit longer than we had imagined. So we need probably another six, perhaps even eight weeks on that. I believe the gym floor at MES is going to be replaced. This is all covered by insurance, so this is not money out of pocket, but it's just too bad that we had to go through this whole experience and we had to move the kids. I haven't heard anything negative about the move, so sometimes, you know, it helps to kind of change it up during mid-year, especially for the fourth graders, and perhaps they're enjoying themselves in their new spaces, and we certainly hope they do. Tomorrow night, we have a Budget Committee meeting. It's a work session. They will also go through all the warrant articles that the board has voted on, and they will make recommendations to go to the public hearing at that meeting at this time. So that's what we are looking forward to tomorrow evening at 7 o'clock at Merrimack High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. School Board update.
I did get an update from the Chairman of the Budget Committee, Mr. Mower. The Budget Committee heard from all the departments district-wide and is preparing for deliberations. They do have a meeting tomorrow night. Chuck reported that the high school administration stated that there was a 60-40 inequity between gender in participating athletics. The Budget Committee is looking for support because they believe the athletic director needs a part-time administrative assistant that would allow him to focus on more athletic initiatives. The Budget Committee is also planning to discuss the Brentwood building issue. Mr. Mower wanted the school board and the administration to know that the Budget Committee members remain devoted to see the school district has the funding. It needs to be successful. Other updates, this is our first meeting that we moved to a 6 o'clock meeting. We're hoping that this will be a good time for our community. We feel it is a better time for our administration, who sometimes get out of these meetings at 11:00 or 11:30 at night, and then we expect them to be up at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning to run schools. So this is a new initiative for us, but we're trying to be the change and so say who we are and do what we say we need to do. And finally, this week, I have the honor to represent Division One, which is 10 states, in the National Federation of High School Sports Committee meeting in Orlando, Florida. This will be my fourth and final year, and it's a great opportunity to have a voice for all of New England and a few other states on the importance of athletics and coming up with the foundation and the rules and the vision for athletics for the entire country. And so we do a small part here and then have that ability. So Lori will be setting the agenda next week, because I'll be in sunny Orlando. Thank you.
Probably enjoying much better weather than we will be here.
Yes.
All right. And our student representative, Vanny, is out as well. She is excused, so we will not have our student representative update. All right. Let's move on to old business and the most popular discussion of the calendar.
Yes, it's that most wonderful time of the year. It's time to put together the school calendar for the 23-24 school year. The importance of doing it early enough is that parents need to schedule vacation times. Family time is very important, and so we want to be able to present the calendar to you within the next several weeks. I wanted to give you an update in terms of the fact that we have convened a committee. We have about a 13-member committee, including administrators and some staff. The union is represented, because we always like to consult with them in the construct of the calendar. We have also spoken with Town Moderator Lynn Christensen to understand the election dates and the implications of those in terms of the expected volume and what we might want and need to do on those days. Wanted to give you an idea also of the various issues that we face in putting together a calendar. Some people tend to think that we just, you know, we move the dates from one year to the next, but I wanted to give the public an idea that, you know, we always like to focus on the appearance and the readability, the user-friendliness of the calendar. We want to make sure that we incorporate the correct number of instructional days and contract days. We've talked with Amy about the nature of the professional development that's needed for next year with the initiatives that she's bringing about and what those days might look like and when they might need to be scheduled. We want to be observant of holiday and cultural observances and vacation weeks along with the calendar in a manner similar to what we did this year. We will be distributing to all our staff for the upcoming school year a guide to religious and cultural observances, where we outline what the various customs and traditions are of those religious and cultural events so that teachers can be a little bit more sensitive to the needs of students and families on those particular days. We look to set the high school graduation date, which is set by law. We want to schedule parent conferences, account, as I said, for election days. We schedule kindergarten registration, which is, as you know, at the present time, is ongoing for the upcoming school year. The two-hour delay to allow transition time for grades kindergarten, 5, 7, and 9 was very successful this year, and so we're going to incorporate that into the calendar for next year, too. We include the daily start and end times and other information on the calendar. We are doing a survey. Once again, that is going out tomorrow, I believe, if it has not already gone out. We want the parents and staff to provide their input, and we look once again to align the calendar to the greatest extent possible with the Career Technical Education Centers. This is an initiative that the state brought about for this current school year with all of the regional feeding districts trying to align calendars to the greatest extent possible with the CTE calendars. So a lot of work to be done, but we are up to the task, and we'll be presenting you with the calendar in about four weeks.
Comments or questions from the board?
Just one. We had talked a while back, I think the last election day, about school being in session on election days, and I was just wondering if that was part of the survey or in being considered, because I really do think it's important if we're inviting, especially with school safety being what it is, the entire town into our buildings. I really don't think it's a good idea to have school that day.
Our plan in talking with Town Moderator Lynn Christensen is to not have students in school on the election days. We may, may use them possibly for some PD days for the staff,
Sure, yeah.
but we'll not have the students in on those days.
Cool.
Excuse me. I had a comment about the, one of the questions on the survey, and this is based on my experience as a parent. It was the yes or no to school before Labor Day question. I would answer that very differently depending on, are we talking about, you know, starting three days before Labor Day? Or are we talking about starting, you know, a week and a half before Labor Day? So my feedback with that would be maybe give folks a little idea of what, what exactly, a little more detail on what that question entails, because I would be, I would be sitting there going, well, okay, what do they mean? Do I, because sometimes I'm not okay with it, and sometimes I am.
Yeah, we're a little bit limited, Naomi, in terms of what we're able to do by the collective bargaining agreement that states that school cannot start earlier than the Monday prior to Labor Day. And so that kind of provides us with some direction in terms of when we can start and how many days we can fit in that first week. Oftentimes, that first week is only a partial number of days. That's a very good point. Thank you for bringing that up.
Like I said, and I would, if I, as a parent, if I knew that, I would say, oh, yeah, that's fine. You know, a couple of days before Labor Day, no big deal. But like, I have, I have family who lives in the South, and they start like really before Labor Day.
Yes. Yeah, some start in like the second week of August down south.
Any other comments?
So I liked how you started that family time is very important, and I applaud the administration for always being proactive and being collaborative versus isolation. You, you know, put a committee together, you do outreach, you try to get the feel of our community to make decisions, and I just think that's very important, and people really respect that they have a voice. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. Families live with a school calendar. They plan a lot, a lot of activities around it.
And I would like to speak as an educator. I'm sure Ken feels the same way. We really, really appreciate the calendar coming out early enough for families to plan their vacations around vacation days rather than middle-of-the-school-year days as much as possible. Things, some things happen, you can't, can't change it, but we want the kids in school. All right. Well, I want to invite our Merrimack delegation of state representatives to come. We have invited everyone to, that is in our Merrimack delegation to come, and several have graciously agreed to come. So we've set up multiple mics and chairs and benches up here for you all to share with us legislative updates and anything specifically related to education or to the town of Merrimack. All right. I will just open the floor to you all.
I'll start, if you don't mind. Thank you. For the record, my name's Rosemarie Rung. I live at 21 Ministerial Drive, and it's a real honor to represent Merrimack and be an advocate for the best interests of our town as we're, you know, devising legislation. Just to let you know where we are in the calendar, we, bills that were filed in September, if it was from an incumbent that was re-elected, or, you know, filed in December from newly-elected people, those bills have now, are now assigned to House committees. If they were submitted by Senator, they, they were submitted to Senate committees. And those committees are holding public hearings on the bills, and they're actually starting to vote on them. And there are a few votes that the committee can take on these bills. One, well, they could also, I should say, the bills could be amended in committee. And then the committee can also have a subcommittee to study that bill further if they need it. But when they're in what's called executive session, they can take a vote to recommend that that bill is ought to pass or ought to pass as amended, if there is an amendment. They can vote to ITL, which is inexpedit to legislate, which essentially kills the bill. Or they can vote in the first year to retain the bill, which could give them more time to study it, and it could be, it could be introduced again in the second year of the biennium. So that's generally where we are in the process. We're in that public hearing, voting on bills. We haven't reached the point yet where bills that were introduced in the Senate have come over to the House. That will happen in March. And then our House bills will then go to the Senate, and the process repeats itself. So I don't know if we want to go into the particular bills that each of us have sponsored. Several of us have sponsored or co-sponsoring bills related to PFAS. And, but I think what personally, as far as I'm concerned, my goal tonight is just to make sure we have open communication so that if there are issues particular to the school board that we need to put on our radar, maybe legislation that's going through the system or legislation you'd like to have introduced. We're all ears. I know that, I believe the Merrimack School Board still is a member of the New Hampshire School Boards Association, and they're a big advocate in Concord. But like anything, there may be times when you may have a particular, a different perspective than they do. But we are really your voice in Concord, so I hope that, you know, having maybe meetings like this once in a while, we can really understand what issues we, that need to be elevated to the state level. Thank you.
Who would like to go next? Oh, do you want to go?
No, I was, I was wondering if everybody could introduce themselves.
Yes.
Good evening. Nancy Murphy, 20 Brenda Lane, Merrimack.
I'm Wendy Thomas, 10 Wildcat Falls in Merrimack.
Good evening. I'm Maureen Mooney, a resident of 9 Handsome Drive in Merrimack. Thank you.
I'm Janine Nodder, 19 Whittier Road, and I'm the senior member of the Merrimack delegation.
Del Boyd, 139 Jopper Road in the 054.
Thank you. I'm going to take a moment now that Rosemarie opened the door. There is actually something that we have talked about offline, so let me just talk as Lori Peters for a moment. But one of the things during the COVID years, under the governor's executive order, we were allowed to have Zoom meetings. Now, publicly, we should not go back to Zoom meetings. I, I want to be in public. But we have a lot of non-public meetings, meanings, and oftentimes, our non-public meanings need to be held swiftly to deal with either student or staff welfare issues that are not open to the public. I would like to see legislation that would allow school districts to do non-public meetings via Zoom or teleconferencing, because it would free this group to meet quickly. We don't have to find a meeting place. We don't have to look for a location, and we can actually hold them at times that are- hold them at times that are more convenient to our leadership team, instead of having them at night and things like that, we might be able to have them at four o'clock in the afternoon and things like that. So, it just struck me that, with our given, our current technology, that non-public meetings really don't have to be in person all the time, and so I'd like to see that as an option for school boards. Bill?
One of the things that I've learned in serving in the legislature is I'm really not good with numbers, House bill number, Senate bill number, I'm really not good with them, but I did sponsor, co-sponsor a bill with Senator Lang that proposes to do similar thing, it's, it's extracting the general court out of that process, however, it's giving, it proposes to give that flexibility to municipalities to be able to meet via Zoom. It doesn't get granular as to whether it's public means or non, or non-public means, it just is, is, the proposed bill is allowing the opportunity for municipalities at all different boards' levels, whether it be school board, town council, all the way down to POCs and REC, being able to meet via electronic communications.
All right. I'll open it up to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, if I could. First of all, I want to thank you for the invitation, it's good to see everybody, and I want to thank you, too, for serving on the school board. To me, there's no higher calling in public service than to serve our children and education. I was a state legislator in 2002 to 2008, and then again in 2020 to the present. I just want to point out Matt was there the entire time, and I have always enjoyed working with him, and every question I've ever had has been answered with the utmost of efficiency. I have bragged about him across the state, so you can't leave us Matt, because we have something very good in Merrimack in addition to all of you, and that is Matt's talent and experience.
Thank you ever so much, I'm humbled by your statement.
Truly meant. If I could just for a moment, just talk about the budget process, because as you'll see, we're at a very pivotal point in the process, so I just want to take you through the timeline, if I could. Every odd-numbered year, in the summer and in the fall, state agencies begin to draft their budgets to present to the governor. That presentation process happens in the fall of odd, or rather even-numbered years, so it just happened last fall. The governor then prepares his draft budget, and that is step two in the process, the state agencies are one, you can think of the budget, the governor drafting his budget, step two. By law, he has to finish his draft and deliver it to the House Finance Committee by February 15th. That number is in, that date is in law. So as you can see by the calendar, we're coming up very quick on his deadline. On February 14th, next week, at one o'clock, the governor will address both the House and Senate on his draft budget. So you may want to, if you can, at that time, tune in, or just be aware of the fact afterwards to hear what he says, he gives a review of his draft. Now, at this point, his draft has been delivered to House Finance, House Finance has roughly six intense weeks to go through that budget with hearings, with input and the like, and then deliver their version to the full House, debate that, get it to the Senate by early to mid-April, they do the same thing, they work on the draft from that point of view, and then any differences and so forth would be ironed out in May or so, with the final version ready for the governor's signature by the end of June. That is the timeline, and that happens every two years, as our budget is a two-year budget. There is speculation, there's a lot of speculation in Concord, but there is speculation that the governor's draft budget will increase adequacy aid across the board, speculation. We'll know February 14th at one o'clock, when the governor reviews the highlights of his draft. I've seen previous budgets that the governor's delivered to the House Finance Committee, and they're in binders approximately six inches thick, so this is no small task, but that is more or less where we are right now in the process, and that's what we're hearing, but we'll know next week. So, obviously, a lot more to say, but I just wanted to get that timeline to you, since we're right at a critical moment, and I know how important it is to all of us.
If, if you wouldn't mind, I just can't resist this, you said February 14th, correct? Well, let's hope the governor's budget has a big Valentine's Day card addressed to the Merrimack, the town of Merrimack, so, thank you very much for, well, you guys do, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Is that all? I just wanted to let you know, I'm working on a lot of bills, as we all are, but there are three bills that I think are particularly important to this committee. One is to, it's a mandate, actually, and Concord doesn't like mandates, but they seem to be receptive to this one, to make insurance companies pay for preventive PFAS care, and this is care that's based on the CDC guidelines, and what triggers the care is a blood test with a result of 20 nanograms of PFAS in your blood or higher. So we're finding infants that are being born with these levels, and so that would trigger, there's a whole set of guidelines from the CDC. I'm sure you're aware also that, that women, pregnant women who ingest PFAS water at the levels we're seeing on our town have a higher incidence of giving birth to babies with autistic symptoms and learning disabilities. So, those would be screened also, and theoretically covered by insurance companies. Another bill I'm working on is to set up a study committee to study long COVID and something called ME-CFS, which is similar to long COVID, it's a reaction to a viral infection, and it's ongoing. The statistics are that if you have COVID, you have a 1 in 10 chance every time you get infected of getting something called long COVID, which can really debilitate people. So the purpose of this study would be to see if we can do anything legislative to keep people in the workforce and to keep kids in schools, because with 1 in 10 kids potentially getting long COVID, we're going to see tons of special ed kids and 504 kids. So that's, that's something that I'm working on. And then another bill that I'm working on, it's, I'm a co-sponsor, it's to reduce the trigger for special ed being covered by the state, it's currently at 3.5, and it's to reduce it to 1.5, to, to help the towns, and this is going to become especially, excuse me, especially important if, if we start seeing a lot of long COVID in our students. So those are the three bills that I think apply here specifically.
All right. You said 3.5 versus 1.5, are you talking about the potential for out-of-district placements? Because I know three and a half times the state average we usually get reimbursed for.
Right. It would be reduced to 1.5.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good bill, it's a really good bill.
It certainly is. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
I brought a lot of notes with me. First, I wanted to talk about what the legislature did in the last budget. For one year, the legislature told communities you are only required to collect a total of $263 billion. This one year, 100 million reduction would require the state's other revenue sources to the Education Trust Fund to fill in the gap and fund the remainder of the state's obligations. The total amount of state support for public education does not change because of this shift in revenue sources. What this change did was reduce property taxes raised locally as a percentage of total funding for education. The swept reduction would amount to one-time aid for communities with an additional 100 million flowing from the state in the fiscal year of 2023. Additionally, in the budget, we increased revenue sharing with municipalities under the meals and rooms tax. The budget in 2019 contained 22% of rooms and meals revenues back to towns, in 2021, the budget contained 30% back to towns. We increased the meals and rooms revenue sharing by 50.5 million to a total of 188 million. I have a whole page about the education freedom accounts, if you want to hear that.
Sure.
Okay. Some of this information is taken directly from the Department of Education. As of September 2022, there were 3,025 children enrolled in the EFA program. That equals out to grants totaling nearly $14.7 million this school year. If those 325 children remained in traditional public school, the cost would be about $65 million. So yes, more children are taking advantage of EFAs than we originally anticipated, but this is in fact costing taxpayers less. The state also sends phase-out grants to public schools that lost students to the EFA program. First year, it's 50% of what the district will lose from that student leaving, second year, it's 25%. Among the 3,025 current participants, 187 of those enrolled are special education students. 1,504 are eligible for free and reduced lunch. Half of the children enrolled are living below poverty level. There are many bills in the Education Committee relative to expanding the program. Students across New Hampshire have diverse needs and have nothing, that have nothing to do with the amount of their household income. It is not only children whose families earn under 300% of the federal poverty level who face circumstances that cause them to seek out other educational opportunities. Adequate education grants belong to the students, and these funds are used to ensure students are receiving an adequate education. This current income cap is in fact discriminatory. It is discrimination to allow some students to use the funds to seek alternative education opportunities, but not allow others. Given how wildly successful the program is, it is only natural we extend it to larger, to a larger portion of the population. There are also many bills before the Education Committee relative to repealing the program. Education is not a one-size-fits-all. The simple fact is that no two children are the same, and a one-size-fits-all system cannot possibly work for everyone. While some families have financial ability for the necessary changes, many cannot afford to do so. To those children currently taking part in the EFA program, it is not fair to remove them from their current learning environment. Education Freedom Accounts leveled the playing field by giving families the ability to pursue the best path for their child. This is done by directing part of the child's state education funding to pay for a number of different educational resources, including tuition at the school of their choice, tutoring, or other education expenses. I have a page on, on the funding and the finance, but Maureen covered that, so the last thing I have in my list is a list of bills that are noteworthy in the Education Committee, if you'd like to hear them. Okay. House Bill 267 clarifies that a school administrative, administrative unit, school district, or chartered public school may require a more frequent or recurring criminal history records check on its employees and volunteers than required in statute. House Bill 352 requires the inclusion of mental and behavioral health issues as excused absences for students at public schools. House Bill 382 and 634 are similar, that they require the State Board of Education to adopt rules for and authorize local school boards to implement release time for students' participation in religious instruction in an elective course for the purpose of satisfying curricular requirements. House Bill 427 establishes requirements for public meetings held by a school board to include a designated time period for questions from the public and answers from the board. This bill also allows an attendee of a meeting of the school board to demand which New Hampshire statute or administrative rule gives the school board the authority described in a school policy or operational procedure. House Bill 466 repeals the State Board of Education's rulemaking authority to adopt rules pursuant to RSA 541-A relative to requirements for the installation of water bottle filling stations. House Bill 514 requires local school boards to develop a policy for responding to parental complaints of obscene materials in schools. House Bill 538 allows school districts to adopt a program for local education freedom accounts for a parent of an eligible student to receive a grant from a scholarship organization for qualifying educational expenses at a public school, chartered public school, non-public school, or a program approved by the Department of Education. House Bill 539 prohibits a public elementary or secondary school from conducting a vaccination clinic during school hours. And lastly, House Bill 5, I'm sorry, a little dyslexic here, 654 allows for a school board to extend the one-year certificate of eligibility for teaching for a second year. This bill requires that the professional code of ethics and conduct apply to the one-year certificates.
Yes.
Thank you very much, and with all due respect to Representative Nodder, I just want to make a point that politics is all partisan, and it's partisan in Concord, and her comments relative to education freedom accounts are not shared. There is a wide disagreement as far as the benefits and the cost impacts to local districts. Speaking for myself, my philosophy in, in dealing with really education or any municipal matters is I strongly believe in local control. All of you are literally and figuratively neighbors of mine, you were elected by the people in Merrimack, you're closest to our kids and our staff, and I think you are the ones that are in the best position to know what's best for our community. So many bills that infringe on your ability and freedom to make decisions are ones that I'm very likely not going to support. I also suggest, if you want to learn more about the financial impacts of education freedom accounts, their oversight or lack of oversight, there are people in Concord who I would be very happy to reach out to, who are staff, who aren't politically aligned that could come and speak to you about those. Thank you. And one other thing, when we're, I would be very interested in knowing how many children are taking advantage of that who were already in private school. I know we saw figures in Concord that with the education freedom accounts, that money was going, 80% of those children were already in, in private schools, so it, it wasn't as though all of them just started going to private school, it was people who had already been paying the tuition, and now they were getting that government money. Thank you.
Ken?
Yeah, well, and since it came up, reading a couple articles that have come out in the last couple of months about the Freedom of Education account, I guess, you know, we just finished for a month working on this budget that, you know, we pawed through and combed through and hemmed and hawed over because it's taxpayers' dollars, and we want to make sure we're doing them the service, or the job we were elected to do, to protect their checkbooks and also give our kids the best education we can, whereas these schools don't have to do that, and they're still taking our tax dollars to fund those, that education, and that concerns me, you know, they don't have to go and sit and look at a budget and get it voted on and go through all the different lines, they can just kind of come up with whatever plan they want to come up with. So, when I hear that, you know, especially when I see 2.7 million going towards private schools, and, and I saw that same number, about 80% were already students in those schools, I have to question the lack of oversight over this account, over this, this act that's been going on so far, so I'd be very interested to know how we're going to kind of bring that in a little bit.
Lori? And so my only point is, you know, this summer, we had a, as a school board, a goals meeting, and one of our goals was that we really wanted to move Merrimack School District forward and personalize education for every student, and, and we're, we're moving in that direction where, you know, we have a new director of educational pathways for our high school to try to meet the needs of all of our kids, so. So when, you know, we say like a one-size doesn't fit all, it's true. That's why it's so important for us to be able to figure out what, what our educational needs are. And, and, and I believe the Merrimack School District is, we're really trying to find a pathway for every student.
Yes.
I would just like to add that I have six children. They're adults now. They've all gone through the Merrimack School System, and I have nothing but positive things to say about it. As I said, they're adults. I've got two computer engineers. One is a therapist who works with autistic children. One is a wilderness EMT. He's living the life. One is an LNA, and one is still in college. She's studying to be a teacher. Well done. Well done, Merrimack.
I did have one question about one bill that I saw when it went to committee, but I don't know the results. That bill was a bill that would require anyone receiving EFA to attend public school prior to receiving those scholarship funds. What was the result of that committee? I can look up the number here. SB one forty-one, I know it's a Senate bill.
Can we get back to you on that?
Yes.
I have to look it up.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
How much does it cost per student to, in Merrimack, to educate a student?
I'm gonna turn that over to Matt because he's our numbers guy.
We're a little bit, I believe, a couple hundred dollars within striking distance of the state average. As they calculate it, you, you net out food service, you net out those pass-throughs that, that come in, you net out transportation. So we're around eighteen thousand dollars a year, which is pretty much around the state average, a little bit more than that. Yeah.
Is that, that's per student?
Yes.
Eighteen thousand dollars a year per student?
That is the per pupil, average daily membership in residence, yes.
So I have another question then. Well, and how much does it cost per student to go to a private school? Because I'm trying to get my, wrap my head around how some are saying that it, it's, we're losing money. It seems to me like-
If you go to Dairy Field, it's gonna cost you fifty K.
If you go to my school, it's eleven thousand. If you go to South Merrimack Christian Academy, it's about ten. But they have discounts for siblings, so it's, it averages out differently.
Bishop Gerton is forty-five.
Exactly. So it's public, non-publics, it's all, it's all over the board.
Yeah.
In terms of, this is something that I kind of came to on my own, going over this budget the last month or so, and looking at all the different sections. And I don't, I don't know exactly how the calculation that, that Matt was talking about, the things that get averaged out. But just my sort of, I don't want to say layman's perspective, but, but coming in, not really knowing anything about how these budgets work and learning about it and coming across it is the, a very large proportion of it is required by law for special education students. And those are things that we have no control over. And so when you talk about an average, you, you've got disproportionate, it's, it's like, yeah, you can average it out, but it, the private schools that maybe can charge a little less aren't required by law to educate those students, and they're not required by law to provide that funds. And like I said, this is my sort of layman's perspective, so it's impossible. I'm not understanding it completely. But that's sort of the, the realization that I'm coming to is it's, it's a very nuanced discussion. And it's really hard to, to break it down to, okay, this is the average of what it costs because it's not necessarily, it's not, it's not the whole picture. There's, there's a lot of, we're very limited in terms of how much we can innovate and what we can do because of the services we are required by law to provide.
And, and we have to educate every child in our town, whereas these schools can choose who they educate. So I guess that would be a major difference.
Aren't private schools, the local LEA responsible for special ed services in a lot of instances?
It depends. So like, our school has special ed services. If our students need services, they cannot go out. They, they have to either pay for it privately, or they have to pay for it then with our services. They don't, they can't go to like Concord and get services.
Yeah.
So a large number of students in our school that get the EFA, they're spending those dollars on special education services with our tutors and our, who are all licensed by the state of New Hampshire, are, you know, certified special education teachers, they're experts, they have, they hold master's degrees. And that's where those EFA funds are being spent, in, in our case. Not every private school has that. So you, you, you know, it's, it's different town to town and school to school.
Well, charter schools, I believe, we have to provide services.
Charter schools do.
Because there's a line item in the budget to actually transport paraprofessionals or special ed teachers over to charter schools if need be. It's around maybe fifty K in the budget for, for special ed transportation, for charter schools specifically.
And I agree with Naomi. It is a very nuanced discussion across the board.
Yeah.
A couple of other topics, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, and we could talk all night. I think I can speak soundly for everybody despite party on that, on legislation. But I just want to get in a few points here. First of all, I listened to the last meeting you had. Representative Rung gave a very good explanation of education funding. And a couple of things she mentioned, I just want to pick up on. First of all, the importance of that free and reduced lunch form. She emphasized it. I want to emphasize it too. Needs to be a big push on that, free and reduced lunch form. I know it's a struggle for everybody in terms of school districts. We've got to get those forms in. Secondly, the issue of unhoused students came up. And that is, I've been talking with legislators and school administrators and other districts, and everybody is having an issue unfortunately right now on that topic. But I want to put two things in front of you. Homeless Child Youth ARP is a program that could be looked into, as well as Title IX Homeless Education. They're both federally funded, but if you didn't know about them, or maybe you did, those were the programs I was given in terms of things to look into for unhoused students. Next topic, this year, I'm on House Finance, and finally, Merrimack has somebody on House Finance, which I'm thrilled about. A big topic right now, and we're just getting started, is school building aid. I noticed, I have here the seventeen projects that have submitted applications to receive school building aid, and Merrimack is not one, which is fine. I don't know if you have any plans to in the future or you have in the past, but there seems to be some movement on expanding the amount that's in the school building aid fund right now. There's even some talk of automatically putting school building aid funds into your budget. So a lot of talk here. We've got our work cut out for us on the budget. But just know that school building aid is, seems to be hot right now in Concord.
Something that you could always count on being there. And then something happened where in Concord, they took out a bond because they didn't want to keep doing the yearly payments to it, and so they used that bond to pay it. And then they changed the rules around. The last project we've got school building aid on, and we are getting school building aid on until our last payment next year, is the middle school. You know, so that was the last project. SAU offices used to get forty percent. We're not high enough on the free and reduced right now in order to qualify for school building aid the way, you know, I understand the rules are written right now. So if they could bring that program back and Merrimack could get its customarily thirty percent aid, that would be, I don't foresee any huge building projects in the future. But we had projects like, we put a sprinkler system in J Mews. It was six hundred fifty thousand dollars because that building didn't have a sprinkler system. We got thirty percent building aid on that. We, it was a warrant article. We paid cash for it. We got it over five years. That was one of the things. But now the projects have to be much bigger, and I believe there has to be a free and reduced component in there too. So that'd be really helpful because it was an institution that you could bank on, and it's just not there anymore for us at least.
Right. Certainly on the minds of legislators right now. And I'll say of these seventeen projects, and this is all online in terms of what people are asking, what districts are asking and what they're getting and so forth, and what they're proposing, of seventeen, only three are being funded.
Yeah.
So there's a waitlist, and obviously on the minds of those in Concord. Okay, lastly, and I just want to touch upon a couple of bills. One was mentioned. But one is House Bill two oh seven. This came recently to us, and you may, you may like this, actually. This is with regards to unanticipated funds. You have to have a hearing for five thousand dollars, is that correct? This bill would move it to twenty thousand dollars. So any gift less than twenty thousand dollars would not require the public hearing that's required and so forth. This is now in the hopper. It had a hearing in front of House Finance, probably last week or the week before.
Yeah, that, that, that's good to hear because we have to post it in the newspaper and everything like that. Customarily, we do it at, I think Rosemary even probably remembers this. We do it at a school board meeting, and it's, it's part of the first part of the meeting is a public hearing. That was first brought to our attention by Carol Lang years ago, and so that's what kind of started that whole. Because it was like, if you had, if you received a dollar, you had to hold a public hearing. And so then the threshold was moved to five thousand. And so now at twenty, I think that's, that's a great thing. That'll save a lot of time and, and energy. Thank you for that.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you for all the work, because I know it's day, night, and weekends. It never ends for you. Tomorrow morning, in fact, there is a hearing scheduled on House Bill four forty-one, which seeks to eliminate the residency requirement. And I'm wondering if you have knowledge of that bill. Am I correct in the assumption that that would allow a student in Merrimack to attend school in another district in New Hampshire? Is that what this bill is intending to do? It says, I'm reading a summary of the bill. It says, this bill removes the requirements in the public school education laws that people attend the school in the district of their residence. Changes of school or assignment are to be granted without discrimination based on residence of the student. I was wondering, in, I've spent many years in Massachusetts, where we had a school choice law. And I wasn't sure whether this was a bill that is similar or replicates the school choice process in Massachusetts.
I would just add, I'm not familiar with the bill. You said it has a hearing tomorrow?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you for the notice. We can all listen in on it and learn more, but thank you.
It's scheduled for nine thirty tomorrow morning.
Yeah. Excuse me, I'm not familiar with that bill, but as Representative Booney said, we can follow it tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, we just, we just got the, we just looked it up ourselves. But I don't know if it's the practice of the school board currently, but I remember when I was on the school board a while ago, if there was a request from a student who lived in another community that wanted to come to Merrimack, we just went and worked with the other school district to see if that could happen. A lot of it was driven on space, if we had the availability. It was also, there was, it was predicated that the parents would provide transportation into Merrimack. And it, it became kind of common because where there may be children of divorced parents and, you know, a parent who may have primary custody lives in another community, but the child already been going to Merrimack and wanted to continue. It was really just the school districts working together to find what was best for the child. And I don't know if that practice continues, but that is something I, I wouldn't want restricted by state law. I would want the school districts to be able to communicate between themselves and determine what's best for the child.
Yes, and that, and that practice, you're precisely correct. That, that practice does continue, the, the best interest statute. We, we have negotiated with, with other school districts several times over the last two years.
That's good. And I do want to address one thing that we spoke about when I was at the school board, talking about state funding. And Matt, I think you'll remember, we were discussing an aspect of state funding where if a school district reaches a certain threshold of free and reduced students, then it got extra additional aid. There is a bill, and it's being sponsored by a colleague of mine that would lower that threshold. So I want you to know, I'll keep you updated as that makes it through the sausage factory.
The sausage fan factory. I love that.
That's what it is. So it is, and it's challenging sometimes to talk about bills before they go through the system because there, there's a lot of changes. And many times, if you're just reading the title of the bill or a quick synopsis, things get lost that, in the details, which can make a big difference. So it is important to hear from, those hearings bring out experts from the executive departments like Department of Education for Existence or the Revenue Administration. And they can bring an aspect to the bill that isn't apparent from just reading it because they, they may see where it might conflict with existing statute or that. I mean, in the case of state funding, and we, we talked, you know, the, the, the loss and swept that's being made up in adequacy, that's only for this year. It doesn't continue next year. So, you know, there are, there are things like that, that people may make assumptions that something may be continuing, but if you don't look at when things expire, that has a big effect on what it, it's going to mean when it hits, it's, hits the local level. And one other point I, I'd like to ask, and I, I don't know how easy it is to do this, but, you know, what, and I, I share your frustration, Naomi, when we look at average student per pupil costs because it varies so greatly, not just, let's say, our kindergarten students or elementary or middle school or high school. And also what type of program that student's in. If it's a special ed program or Title I, a lot is picked up locally, I think. I don't think we get the federal dollars that we used to on Title I. So there are, you know, customized programs we have in Merrimack to fit the needs of the students, and they all come with varying costs. But one thing that sometimes really overlooked in determining, you know, how people perceive school funding is the whole area of fixed cost. Because we could have a hundred students, let's say, from Reed's Ferry School, that end up leaving to go to private school. But unless they were all like in the same grade with the same teachers, our fixed costs are going to be the same. Educating twenty children in a classroom is going to cost as much as educating eighteen, really. And I would be kind of interested to see if there has ever been an analysis done to see what those fixed costs and variable costs are. Because we don't really have a lot of leeway. If, if we're taking a per pupil cost out of the district for a student that's leaving, it's not like we're saving that much money. That's, that's money we have to make up because we still have to pay the lights, we still have to pay for heat and, and all that. Unless we have enough kids leaving in a particular grade, in a particular school, in a classroom where we could lay off a teacher, that's really where we spend our money. I, I mean, how much of our, our district budget goes to salary and benefits? It's probably, I'd say, maybe around seventy percent.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. Seventy, seventy-five percent goes to, and then you have, you have your buildings. I mean, we have six hundred and fifty-six thousand square feet of buildings. And so if you have a hundred kids that leave your district, but they're sprinkled throughout the grade levels, and then all, all third graders in Reed's Ferry Schools, then there's not a whole heck of a lot you can do that with reduction in staff. We did, however, years ago, have around three hundred and eighty, three hundred and eighty-five teachers when our enrollments, you remember this, Rosemary, were around almost forty-nine hundred kids. That was years ago, back in, I forget where it was. It was around the time we were going to build, build a middle school because of overcrowding at the upper elementary school or the old middle school that had fourteen hundred kids in it.
I think it was two thousand and one.
Two thousand and one? Yeah, you're probably, more than likely, you're, you're correct on that one. But, you know, it, it's not a, it's not an easy thing to do unless you have like a, you can close a building, and we're not near anywhere that, that point right now.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I just want to touch on one more thing. So Maureen was talking about the homeless population. And of course, you have McKinney-Vento, which is the law that if a student lives in transition, even just for one night, we open our doors if someone shows up at our door. But at the last meeting, in the budget meeting, we did address that when we talk about free and reduced lunch, we don't talk about homeless students. And because of the overflow of homeless students in Nashua, they are coming to Merrimack to the hotel. And you just have to look at, you know, three o'clock in the afternoon, you can see a bus pull up to that hotel and drop students off. So we, we have a bigger stress in Merrimack now, and it would be great if there would be- And it would be great if there would be a bill that would support homeless students at a higher rate than students that are free and reduced lunch, because the, the issues that they bring and the gaps in education are just so much greater. And, and it does put a lot more stress on our school district.
Thank you. Well, we are so glad that you all joined us today. And, and Bill, I'll open it up to you.
No, I'm not going to steal any thunder, but Rose, do you want to talk about House Bill 35? No, I, I wasn't there. I didn't sponsor. You were the prime sponsor, I think. We need to give, give a shout out.
Okay, definitely kudos. So we have a great student at Merrimack High School named Matthew Brown. He's a, he's a freshman, and he called me out of the blue, I think last summer, that he wanted to have a bill that would add the Eating Disorders Helpline to student IDs. And I told him, you know, getting the bill, as my colleagues know, it's a lot of work. And show me there's a problem that this bill will solve, because it's going to waste a lot of time and people's, you know, a lot of staff time to, to go move ahead. Well, he, he sent me this brilliant, one paragraph statement that talked about how serious eating disorders are. And I didn't realize that 40% of people who die by suicide had anorexia. Eating disorders is one of the leading causes of, of suicide. It's, it's just astounding. And most of these eating disorders start manifesting in adolescents. It starts from body dysphoria, you know, they see all the media and they think, oh, I'm, I, I don't look the way I should. And so it gets them into this cycle. And so Matthew actually worked on drafting the bill, House Bill 35. And I'm, I'm very pleased that Representative Boyd is a co-sponsor. Also Representative Healy, who's not here today. And Representative McGoo isn't here today. I wanted to mention those two. But we had the public hearing. Matthew came up and testified, did a great job. He was grilled by several members of the committee, and he was awesome. They were so impressed with him that they amended the bill to call it the Matthew Brown Act. And so it is, it passed committee. It wasn't unanimous, but it was, there was a, a pretty good, it was 14 to 6. And it's going to the House floor. I don't think it's been scheduled. It's probably going to be February 22nd, I'm guessing. It's not on the calendar for our session next week. But Matthew's going to come up and I'm going to move, unless one of my colleagues wants to move, special order it. So it's the first bill that we, that we hear. And if all's well, if it passes the House, then it will go on to the Senate, and then we, we do the whole thing over again. But he was very articulate. I know that one of the committee members actually sent a message to the high school principal, and then I also forwarded on to the middle school principal, just saying how impressed he was with, with Matthew. So it's good. Thank you very much for mentioning that, Bill.
Janine?
Yes, Representative Boyd told me about this bill. I was out sick that week, really, had a really bad flu. Otherwise, I would have been there to support the student. Just wanted to say today, Representative Bob Healy is out because it is his brother's birthday. It's also Ronald Reagan's birthday, so I can see why he'd want to go and celebrate with his brother. And Representative McHugh said he's watching, but he couldn't make it here.
Well, again, I want to thank everyone who came tonight, and I want to thank those in the delegation that couldn't be here tonight, letting us know that they were unable to come. And we would like to keep this dialogue open. I think it is very, very important to have that connection with Concord and the connection with you. So we want to thank you again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you could steal a page from the town council and actually incorporate it as a part of your agenda.
We will. Absolutely. All right, moving on to other new business. Do you have any other new business? Naomi?
I have stuff. Um, so I've, this, I have been going to the budget committee meetings, and there's been a lot of rumbling at, at the budget committee about Brentwood. And I feel like we, as a school board, it was listed as one of our budget priorities. And it was on the capital improvement plan for next year, and it never appeared anywhere in the budget, and we haven't really talked about it. So before the budget committee does their deliberations on the budget tomorrow night, I feel like we need to have a discussion about Brentwood, about what our options are, and about what we, as, as a school board, are planning to do, whether, when, and how, and all of that.
So I think Matt should explain how this works with it being on our CIP for this next school year.
Yeah, just because it's on your, your CIP doesn't necessarily mean it, it automatically floats into the budget. You know, capital improvement program, it's for anything over the value of $100,000. And it's, it's necessarily not exactly a spending plan, but when you should, you know, redo your assets. And if you do it properly, then it just becomes a spending plan, kind of like the, the roof access, the roof access, the roofs that we replace. And so it's on the CIP for $350,000. That was approved by the, the Planning and Building Committee. And the school board did, did take a look at it. I don't think we did a formal review or acceptance of it as of yet. But it is there, but it's not in the budget. And there's been talk about utilizing surplus from this year's budget, which I am pretty confident we will have in order to take care of that issue. We have gone ahead and taken the liberty of contracting three demolition companies and another company that does with, deals with earthworks to get a more precise number on that. But 350 sounds pretty good, but we'll, we'll see what it'll entail. So if you deem it agreeable to authorize us to do that, all you would have to do is, we have a line in the budget, there's $10 in it right there. Last year, the budget committee put it in there, if you recall. Just, you know, fund, fund that line to the, you know, to $350,000 or whatever you want to, to have it say. And then just authorize us to go forward with the demolition. I'll get pricing, and then you can make a final discussion. So it wouldn't have to wind up in next year's budget. It could be taken from this year's budget surplus, because the purpose for which it is, is already in the budget, because the budget committee put it in there last year for this year's budget.
So I know, being on the school district planning and building committee for like 20 years, we have talked about this building to the point where I'm, I'm ready to give the $350,000 to, to take it down. So if Matt thinks that it's something that we could do this year, because we did put the $10 in the line to leave that option, my only, and I want it gone, is just to make sure that, you know, the school district is able to complete another task on top of all of the tasks that we asked them to do. If it's possible, then I think I personally would vote to, to take it down this year with surplus money.
Naomi, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I've, I've been thinking about this a lot, because I've been having conversations with people who are on the budget committee. And I've been kind of learning about some of the history of it. And one of the things that struck me is we keep talking about it, and I would really like to be done talking about it. And just to cover all the bases, the options are, as Matt said, we could use, we could move the money over, we could use surplus from this year, we could just get it done. We could put it in next year's budget. That would be a concrete plan. We could make promises that we're going to put it in a future budget, which I feel like has some serious cons, because I feel like that's what kind of has been happening, is we just keep kicking the can down the road and down the road and down the road. And I don't love the option of putting it into next year's budget either, because I think it detracts from our very important goals and the things we need to do for our students and our teachers. But yeah, just in all fairness, like that's kind of the, the options, how I see it, is now, next year, some indeterminate time in the future, and weighing the pros and cons of those, those options.
So I want to say a couple of things. I don't, I'm, you may have heard this in the history, but part of the reason why we're still on it is, prior to COVID, it was part of the master plan. The board, previous board was waiting on demo for that to occur. And obviously, all that slowed down, so now we're at a point where it's time to demo it. But I am in favor, since using Mr. Mower's very eloquent words, the funds have been raised and appropriated this year with that line item to use the surplus this year. And the reason I feel like we need to do that versus putting it in the budget is our district leadership worked very hard to cut 465K out of it, of this next year's budget. And part of the reason for that was, we have a teacher contract that is a warrant article that is critical in getting passed. So adding 350K back into next year's budget, I think is counterintuitive for that teacher contract and the, and the work they did. So since it's been raised and appropriated, and we have the line item, I would be in favor of actually doing it ASAP.
Is that a motion?
Can, can I make the motion? Because I brought it up. I've never done that.
You make, you make it, I'll second it.
So I would like to move that we make a motion that we transfer $350,000 from, I don't know, how, how do I say that?
From unencumbered surplus.
Unencumbered surplus into the line item for demolishing the Brentwood building with the intention of knocking it down.
Second.
Tie. Tied for the seconds.
All those in favor?
4-0-0.
Passes.
Yay. All right, Matt, we've unleashed you two.
Yes, we have walkthroughs scheduled this weekend with a couple of demo companies. So we're, we're going to get rolling on this thing.
Excellent.
And we want to be mindful of our neighbor, Mrs. Kendall, right next door, too, also, and kind of minimize any stress that she would have by listening to, you know, construct, deconstruction go on. So we want to do it in a neat, orderly fashion. And it's something we don't really have to wait for the summer to do. We can do it as, as, as soon as we can, as long as we fence off a proper work area for the, the big toys to get in there, so. That'll be exciting. I can watch it from my window.
Do we have any other new business? All right, let's move on to policies.
All right, the three policies that are being presented tonight, two of them are the second reading. And let's see, we have, all of these policies have been reviewed by our legal counsel and updated. The updates and revisions, deletions, additions are in red to be in a little bit more compliance with statutory requirements. And so I'm seeking approval, or at least I will say, in the future, we will seek approval of all three of these. We have not had any comment to this point in time on any of the policies. And I appreciate what our attorneys have been doing in terms of the update, in terms of updating the reporting, child abuse and neglect policy, the availability and distribution of healthy food, and the approval of the revised safety and violence prevention, essentially the bullying policy.
Any comments from the board on any of these three policies?
Hi. Um, actually, I have a, I have a comment, not on the three policies. It was on the, the policy progress chart
Yes.
that we were given, which I love. Oh, actually, I have two comments. One of them is, I noticed on the website that the policies got reorganized by category, and I wanted to thank you for, for doing that.
Sandy has, my administrative assistant is putting a lot of work on, on that.
Yeah, it's, it's so much, going to make it so much easier for people to find the things that they need. And so I wanted to recognize that work. And I'm glad you said that it was Sandy who did it. That was, um, so thank you, Sandy, and thank you to all of you for making that happen. This is just, you don't have to answer this question right this minute, but just to like put out there, we had talked about policies in our goals meeting, and I had kind of not, not brought it up again, because I knew we were focusing on budget. And there was, I felt like the goals with teachers and, and students were more important in the, in the short term. But looking at this chart, I'm wondering, is the, is the, is the pace that we're reviewing them at, is that going to be adequate to kind of get us on a good schedule where we're looking at them more than, more often than every 10 or 15 years? Or is there an industry standard? Is that, is 10 or 15 years about right, or should it be more often? It feels like it should be more often.
Yes, no pol, no policy should be in effect for 10 or 15 years. What we're doing, I think, is, is the right and responsible thing, is we're trying to bring policies to you at every meeting now. It gets a little bit difficult at a more accelerated pace. So I think if we can bring forth one or two new policies about every meeting, that's going to put us in very, very good shape.
Thank you. I was, yeah, that was my kind of. Um, and then I don't have any content stuff for the policies. As per usual, I found a couple of like really minor grammatical or typographical things that I'll email to Sandy.
We always like to include the
Say that out loud.
Policy version of Where's Waldo?
And it was really minor stuff this time. It was like, you know, there was a comma missing in one place, and there was an "and" missing. It was like not, nothing big.
So tonight, we are taking a vote to approve a revised people's safety and violence prevention. So I'll take, I'm, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
So? All those in favor say aye.
Can I make one quick amendment to that motion? How does that work? There are, I have typos on two pages that I would, can I, can we say with, with my corrected typos?
Yes.
Yeah, so then I can email them to Sandy, and she's authorized to change them? Cool, thank you.
All right, so with the amended typos corrected and emailed, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes 4-0-0. All right, we're going to move on to the approval of minutes. Before I take a motion for December 19th and January 4th, Lori and I were discussing the 12th, 17th, and 19th, those minutes. The questions that were submitted by the board via email are in the minutes, but there were several that we didn't ask or we asked in a different way. And so we think those minutes need to be amended to reflect the actual meeting and not what we emailed, since though, that, there was a change between those two. So we want to hold off on those three. But I will entertain a motion to accept December 19th, 22, 2022 minutes.
Should we move, if, if I have something that I would like corrected?
Yep, do it now.
And then our
No, just go ahead and correct it now.
Um, page two, I think there's a word that's wrong. Right near the top, oh, there's lines. Line, start at line 54. Chief Educational Officer Olson noted that elementary school had its chorus concert. Okay, so the next line. He added that the Director of Student Services said that parent conservation meetings would be held on January 11th?
Oh, it's your parent conference meetings.
Is it conference? Yeah, or conversation or education or?
Oh, no, I see it. Are you talking about with Heather Barker?
Yeah.
No, those are, they're called parent conversation. They're like coffee and conversation.
Yes, but the word says conservation.
Mine says conversation.
Mine says conservation.
So the electronic copy says conversation.
Okay.
It is in the electronic copy, conversation.
So it got fixed from the one I have to?
Yes, yes. And I will second that. All those in favor, aye, 4-0-0. All right, January 4th, 2023. Do I have a motion? Or any corrections?
Sorry. Line 29, the reading program foundations, it's not foundations, it's fundations.
That's right, fun.
Yeah.
Because learning to read is fun.
It is fun.
I'm just, I'm just scanning the electronic copy. Give me one second, because I don't have line numbers on the electronic copy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, moved by Lori, second by Ken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
4-0-0. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I'm bringing forth a nomination for a high school social studies position. Karen Mulligan is going to join the team there, and I know you is going to join the team there and I know you will join me in welcoming him. I also want to let you know that Stephanie Scher is no longer employed by the district as a science teacher at Merrimack Middle School.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Moved by Lori, second by Ken, all those in favor? Aye, four zero zero.
Lori, may, may I just make a correction of something I said?
Yes.
Although Sandy has been very instrumentally involved, my administrative assistant in the policies. Amy corrected me, it's Allison Huckins who has put the new policy format in place. She is the webmaster, so Allison, I apologize for the mistake and thank you very much.
All right, committee reports.
We have one coming up, the health wellness, health wellness? Yes, we have one coming up in a few weeks, I'll have a report next time we meet.
I did Parks and Rec a couple of weeks ago. Parks and Rec is fun, it's, it's all interesting things, but things that might be interested for families in the district are the summer camp, Camp Natticoop is almost full, but they do have some spaces still available. They're looking to hire staff and they are offering a counselor in training program for fifteen-year-olds this summer, if there are fifteen-year-olds who are interested. The winter carnival is on the twenty-fifth of February at Wasserman Park. And the slides at Kids Cove, I don't know if everybody saw, got knocked down by a tree during that big windstorm we had a couple of weeks ago. And they're due to be replaced sometime in the spring, right now it's boarded up so people can't like climb out the hole where the slide was. That was all.
Any other committee reports? All right, we'll move on to correspondents.
I had a correspondent with a parent and I just directed them back to the school principal.
I had a, a message from a parent regarding a coach and I have directed them to administration.
Yep, and some emails from parents regarding foreign language credit, which I answered and directed to appropriate administration.
A couple of emails about issues with IEPs that were forwarded to administration.
All right, any other correspondence? Yes.
I'm wondering if Caitlin had any update since she came in.
Caitlin, would, do you have a student representative update for us tonight?
Yes, I do, I'm so sorry for being late, but I just wanted to report that the gift card fundraiser that class of twenty twenty-three in Merrimack High School Student Council hosted raised five thousand dollars for the Vennadim family. So that was my only update, but needed to be shared.
All right, comments from the board?
Just a good news with, one of the highlights of the music ed calendar happened this past weekend, the Jazz All-State Festival was held at Pinkerton Academy for three days, Thursday, Friday and Saturday. And I got to watch our two Merrimack students, Trey Grant and Akari McDowell, both performing in the jazz ensemble outstanding concert. If you didn't make it, you missed out on something great, it was phenomenal, they did a wonderful job.
Any other board comments? All right, well with that, I will open up the floor to public comments on agenda items. If you would like to come forward, please state your name and address.
Just in time, Robbie Reisman, Iris Drive. They're not here, but I did want to thank the Merrimack delegation for all showing up here. I do, I think this six o'clock start time is, I completely understand why y'all are doing it, it makes total sense. And I was already running late to the seven o'clock one, so expect me running about an hour and fifty minutes late to these ones now. And lastly, I, after watching, I did watch a lot of the meeting on TV. I did want to state, just my opposition to expanding the education freedom accounts. I do not believe, and this is more for folks who are probably not in the room now, but I'm, just generally I like the idea, taxpayer money I feel like should be going to public schools, that's where I want my money going. And I've got obviously a personal investment in that, but, no, I wanted to, and particularly I, I like that they are bound to the same sort of regulations, you know, it's just standards and regulations that, that I'm comfortable with. And the other one that caught my eye was some sort of bill about screening materials and libraries for obscene materials. And I've seen how that's gone down in some other states, I don't thi, I don't, I'm hoping we're not gonna go down that, that route as well. All right, that's it.
All right, seeing no one else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Lori, seconded by Ken, all those in favor? Say aye, four zero zero, thank you and good night.
Good night.